June 9, 2020 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. We are the Marion County Leadership Team. If we choose one word to describe us, it would be student-centered because student success is our mission. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and relevant. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, diverse, and dynamic. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality and clarify expectations, and get better. We do not accept excuses. We will not accept mediocrity. We will always put students first. We will leave a legacy of success. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a line green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 p.m. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District 1. Mrs. Beth McCall, District 2.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Yes.
Mrs. Nancy Thoreau, District 4.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Dr. Heidi Mayer, Superintendent.
Here.
Ms. Kelly Hames, School Board Attorney.
Hamer, here.
Hamer, excuse me.
Please stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
I recommend approval of the agenda for the June 9, 2020, school board meeting with the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting with the exception of item D-19.1, the non-exclusive master affiliation agreement between the School Board of Marion County, Florida Hospital, Ocala, Inc., doing business as Advent Health. Item 19.2, Evergreen Elementary School contract, which has been placed under discussion. And item C-10.2, amendment number one to the construction manager contract guaranteed maximum price, GMP, for the construction of a new cafeteria and kitchen at Osceola Middle School, project number 19104.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. McCall.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Thoreau. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the April 8, 2020 Appointed Superintendent applicant interviews meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. King. Seconded by Ms. McCall. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? There being none. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April 9, 2020 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Thoreau, seconded by Ms. King. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? There being none. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. I will now ask the school board attorneys to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In compliance with section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board secretary no later than 5:40 p.m. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt by the school board secretary. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, item six, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families are also strictly prohibited. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements. Mr. Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks.
Thank you. Elena, how many do we have?
We have one. Ms. Betty Jean Smith, please.
Thank you.
My name is Betty Jean Bowie Smith, S.M.I.T.H. My address is 2347 Southwest 5th Street, Ocala, Florida, 34471. Good evening, everyone. On Saturday, one of your dean of students made a racially charged statement on Facebook. I reached out to her principal. First, I reached out to the dean of students and let her know that that was unacceptable for a dean of students. She went back and forth, then maybe 30 minutes later, she changed her post to where it'd be more racially tolerated. I reached out to her principal at South Ocala and let her know that I didn't like the statements that was made, and I reached out to all the board members, to the governor, to all avenues. I received an email back from her principal saying it was, she didn't see anything wrong with what she said in her post. Then she had made another post calling African-Americans sons of you-know-what. Then, once we addressed her with that, she changed her, what you call it? I forget how you say it. The font or what she wrote on it. She changed it to fix that so she wouldn't get in trouble, but it was already done. Then, I was contacted by a school board member telling me that she sees no problem with what the teacher said, the dean of students said, and then she started going back and forth racially charged. I have a problem with that. They represent Marion County. If you're a little black student and you're going to a dean of, you've been in trouble, how would you feel if they found out the person that's chest-having you don't like, people that look like you? Can you imagine how parents feel now? Do you know how we feel? Do you know what it feels like for a dean of students to talk like that and then find out from parents that goes to the school that they've told the principal how they felt? Not one thing is in her foul from the parents' complaints? Something's wrong. Something's wrong. Then my son goes to Vanguard. Two years ago, the ADA, he dropped the N-word. Nothing was done. I wrote letters. Nothing was done. You tell me, what's wrong? Do y'all have a blind eye? Is something wrong? The child don't care? Is it something wrong that the board doesn't care? That the board can email and say, "One proud board member"? I'm asking. I'm asking you. Are you okay? Are you okay with that? You don't care? You don't care? Well, let me tell you about me. My father, born in 1925, fought in World War II. You can look it up. Was in Pearl Harbor. Was in the water three days, almost died. Came home, came home to what? Injustice. Treated bad because of color of his skin. Same father was in the Navy, slept upon the pipes because in the old days, you had man of color, you didn't get a good bed, so he got asbestiosis. Three times, he had cancer. Colon, prostate, and he died of leukemia. And then, I have a board member that says her grandfather is upset because of that. I don't care about her grandfather. I care about my father. I care about my children. I care about the black kids in this community who have a dean at a school who's racist, and you sit up there and you defend her and you're okay with it? And you sit back like a queen in your chair? I'm upset. And I'm telling you in your face, I'm upset. I'm very upset. What do you have to say? Tell me. You know who I'm talking to. I'm not calling your name out. You know who I'm talking to. Ms. Proud, oh, I forgot, she has a black nephew, and that allows her to say what she wants to say. Having a black nephew don't give you the [inaudible]. I'm sorry.
Kevin.
Smith.
Kevin, I would like for you to make public my emails to her.
Keep going, Ms. Smith.
Okay. For you to tell me because you have a black nephew, that gives you the right to say what you want to say. It does not, yes, I do, I have every email.
You're on your time.
Okay. You're on my time, so shut it down for us. Just to let you know, I'm very upset.
So am I.
So, I'm glad you're gone. No, Viva can't get him fast enough.
Smith.
Okay. I'm done. I just said what I wanted to say. I want an investigation into the teacher, the dean of students at Ocala, South Ocala. I want an investigation into her, into how she treats the black kids, how she disciplines them to the white kids, the stuff that she says. It's on y'all watch, Ocala, Marion County School Board. It's on y'all watch. We want y'all to do something. I'm done.
Ms. Smith, we got your complaint.
Okay. It's on y'all watch.
If you want me to respond?
I'm sorry, sir. Go ahead. I'm done.
For the record, this has been addressed. I have gotten with employer relations, and they have opened a formal investigation. We will, if you come back before us, we will not say anything concerning this while there's an investigation.
I thank you for even opening it up because depending on others, it wasn't. Depending on the principal, who said it was okay. So if the principal feels it okay, I want her investigated too.
Investigation.
Oh, excuse me. I want the principal investigated too, opening up too. Thank you. Y'all have a great day.
Thank you. Any other?
No, ma'am. No, sir.
May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items C-6.1 through C-17.1 with the exception of items D-19.1, D-19.2, and C-10.2 that has been placed under discussion.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Thoreau.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. McCall. No discussion. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the non-exclusive master affiliation agreement between the School Board of Marion County, Florida Hospital, Ocala, Inc., DBA Advent Health?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. McCall.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Thoreau. Any discussion?
Seconded by King.
I'm sorry. Seconded by Ms. King. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. May I have a motion to approve the Evergreen Elementary School contract?
So moved.
Moved by, is this the contract that we were just talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we're pulling this one, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, we are.
We need to pull this one for discussion. Okay. So, D-19.2 needs to be, it was pulled.
It is under discussion. Correct. We can go ahead and have.
Okay. We had the motion for it. Did anybody make a motion?
We need a motion in a second.
I think we had a motion in.
I thought we did too.
Did we? I didn't keep track.
Did we have a [inaudible]?
Did we? No?
Okay, so I'll move it.
Moved by Ms. King.
And I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. McCall. All right. I pass the gavel to Ms. Thoreau on this one.
Okay, we need to still, we're still on 19.2, on the Evergreen, so we're going to have discussion on it as to what we're going to do because it's already there. So we need to decide whether it's being totally withdrawn and being placed on another agenda or it's being pulled completely.
Who pulled it?
Who pulled it?
It was already under discussion. No one, no one was pulled. It was under discussion, you know, just for conversation, but now there's been an issue with the actual contract. So now we have to have discussion about the actual contract that's left that's.
Can you explain, Ms. Attorney?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Cummings. So, as you know, I am substituting in for Attorney Green, and so I was presented some documents today. Apparently, what was on the discussion and the work session that y'all had on June 4th did not include the proper language of an amendment to the contract that was sent to us from the state. It just didn't catch up with what you guys had discussed on June 4th. And so, in order to actually approve the amendment, I think that the whole thing needs to be pulled. I'm not comfortable with approving it legally, the form of it, with the documents that I've seen because what was discussed by you guys on June 4th did not have the language that the state wanted to include in the contract. So Legal has not seen the document with the right language in it and has not signed off on it. So it needs to be done as an amended First Amendment.
So I emailed that Thursday afternoon to Legal.
Mm-hmm. All I know, Dr. Mayer, is what I was given was, what you discussed on June 6th was the original agreement for Educational Management Services, I believe, with a signature.
It was June 4th.
June 4th.
And Dr. Ellers presented. We had consensus with the strike-through language. That afternoon at 2:55, I emailed that all to Legal, and so it's been there since Thursday afternoon.
All I know, Dr. Mayer, is I was given documents at 3:30 this afternoon as, to look at, and the documents that I was given is, was originally the First Amendment to the agreement that I think was sent to the state, and the state then came back and said, "We need to change some of the language in paragraph two of the original contract that we're now going to try to extend for a year." And when I look at the contract that you guys discussed on June 4th and that Ms. Elsperman signed her signature page on that, which has not been signed off on by Legal, it does not have the required language in it that the state says needs to be in there for the contract to meet the state requirements. So it simply needs to be pulled off of the agenda. The contract needs to be reworded and include the state, the language that the state wants to have on there.
Is it the same language that we agreed on?
Yes.
Thursday.
On Thursday. Just a very small change.
It is a very small change.
We can't approve this one? If you have the correct one, we can't approve it right now?
Actually, what I did, if you go back and look at the email, we came up with a document called amended First Amendment to the Agreement, which includes the language that the state wants us to have done. And after I reviewed that this afternoon at 10 minutes till 4:00, I said that I would approve this from Legal, and I think that information went to Dr. Mayer that we needed to pull what was on the agenda and put this document in, and rightly so. Dr. Mayer wanted to know why we were doing that, and so she and I were exchanging emails right here at the last minute. So basically.
I didn't exchange back to that.
Well, isn't this time-sensitive?
Yes.
I mean, so we need to do whatever we need to do tonight.
Of each party, if there's a way to do that legally so that we can stick to our timeline of getting it up there tomorrow.
What Dr. Mayor is saying.
I welcome your direction.
She sent something Thursday to the state, correct?
I sent it after I sent it to you all.
You sent it to the state?
Mm-hmm. Then that afternoon, I forwarded that up to Mr. Sewell in Vice Chancellor Ramsey's office, telling him that they would, here was what the board provided consensus on Thursday at the work session, and they agreed to approve it Tuesday night, tonight, at the meeting, and to expect the signed copy first thing Wednesday morning, tomorrow.
Okay, we can make it happen. What do we need to do?
Basically, we've drafted a document entitled amended first amendment to the agreement, which if, the first amendment to the agreement was the agreement that everybody signed off on in May, which basically was extending the original contract by a year. The state came back, wanted some language deleted, so I drafted a document that says, or I approved a document that had been drafted, that says amended first amendment to the agreement, which includes the language that the state said they wanted to be substituted in in paragraph, part B of paragraph two. The only thing that they've deleted from the original contract in, that was entered into in 2019, is they deleted the language as a result of FDOE slash SBE rejection.
Right, we talked about that.
We talked about that.
That's the only difference.
If I make a motion that we amend the...
We approve the amendment.
That we approve the amendment, and...
Can I get a second? Well, approve the amendment to the first amendment, is that what we...
You're approving the amended first amendment to the agreement, and with that, I can sign off on the form as tonight's board attorney, and then, Mr. Cummings, you can sign. The only person that would not have been, and Dr. Mayor, you can sign, but Ms. Elsperman is not here to sign, so we would have to get her to do that because she signed a document June 4th.
All right, so we need a motion to...
Let me hear what Dr. Mayor has to say about this. Let me hear what you have. Nothing? Okay. Okay.
This caused a lot of stress this afternoon. This caused a lot of stress with a lot of folks scrambling with their child in the dentist's chair, trying to figure out what was going on with secretaries calling each other back and forth.
Okay. We'll go ahead, let's do what we need to do. We just made a...
I made a motion that we...
Amended.
And the amended mo...
Amended first amendment.
First amendment. And can I get a second?
Did we approve that? I'll second.
So this is a substitutionary motion?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor? Signify by aye.
Aye.
Okay.
It's, I'm a little bit confused by this because I think this was one that you still had because you didn't pull it.
You're right.
Okay. Clear as mud, but...
But mud's not too clear.
Right. But for the community to understand, I think it's important to say here that we reached consensus on the amended language at the work session, which is publicly televised, and anyone can go back and watch it last Thursday, was really just deleting one statement that, again, had nothing to do with the price or the scope of services. So it really is a semantic issue, but it's still a legal issue from what I'm hearing. So we've now cleared that up, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. All right. Moving on. May I have a motion to approve amendment number one to the construction manager contract, guaranteed maximum price, GMP, for construction of a new cafeteria and kitchen to Osceola Middle School, project number 19104? May I have a motion?
So move.
Second. Chair Cummings, I understand you pulled this item and wish to have additional discussion?
I did. I pulled this item after having some discussion. Mr. Knight's here, come on up, Mr. Knight. Because of the timing, this contract may not be good as far as with the numbers. Mr. Knight, it was...
Yes, well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. This, I didn't catch the name, but the board of the Aimer, thank you, and Dr. Mayor, and Ms. Salinas Martinez Lopez. Last Thursday, when I gave the construction update, the board expressed a desire to wait until we had pricing for both cafeteria projects. That would be North Marion High School's cafeteria project, as well as Osceola Middle's together. And in July, I will be coming before you all to talk about the five-year work program anyway, which would be a good time to at least, even if we don't have pricing for North Marion High School yet, at least look at the big picture as far as all of the capital projects and how these projects would fit in. Currently, they are funded, but of course, unfortunately, as I reported last week, the funds are not enough, as we see it right now, to sustain both projects, either project even independently, for construction. So, right now, the recommendation is to approve the GMP, the guaranteed maximum price, which is to completely construct all of Osceola Middle School's cafeteria project. That would be the building, the site work, and everything included. And of course, the funding plan, there is a recommended funding plan, but in lieu of what the board requested last week, I would recommend that the item be voted down because if you table it, it will stay frozen at that price, and if we come back, say, three or four months from now, when North Marion's is ready, then it's very likely that that price will no longer be good, and you'll have to vote it down again, and then we'll have to readdress Osceola all over again. So, a vote down would allow it to come back to our department so that we can bring you information in July, and then again, perhaps in August, or whenever North Marion High Schools is ready. At least, the board next month will have a big picture of the entire five-year work program and how both these will fit in, in terms of funding.
Mr. Knight brought this to me the other day, and after we had the work session, because we both, we all said that we were kind of tired of them putting North Marion's off, and how did Osceola get so fast, and we said we want them to go, to move simultaneously. So, after looking at that, this is probably the better recommendation, that we vote this down.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation.
Sure.
So, may I have a motion to approve amendment number one to the construction manager contract, guaranteed maximum price for construction of a new cafeteria and kitchen to Osceola Middle School, project number 19104?
Don't we have a motion on the floor?
We do have the motion, I think we have to vote.
So it's just, so we vote?
Yes, so just...
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You mean, yeah, she didn't mean that.
All those opposed?
I was still on the other case.
Right. All those opposed? No?
Aye.
So let's vote it down.
Unanimous opposed.
Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're good, you're good, you're good, you're good, you're good, you're good.
Do you want me to do the reading for the donations?
Go ahead, please. Go ahead.
Is it okay to do that? Because you're...
You have the gavel, do it.
Go ahead, you got the gavel.
All right. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of $2,000? $1,000 to Forest High School from Citizens First Bank, $1,000 to Vanguard High School from Citizens First Bank.
So move.
Moved by Chair Cummings.
Second.
Second by Ms. King. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Ms. McCall, would you like to go ahead and give the thanks, please?
Certainly. We are always so very grateful for those outside of our system that continue to support our students and their endeavors. So, we are incredibly thankful and grateful. Thank you.
The next regular administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for June 18, 2020, at 9 o'clock a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss school planning update, school starts, stop times, I N A colon Academy charter contract, and autism endorsement renewal. The following administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for July 16, 2020, at 9 o'clock a.m. The purposes of the work session is to discuss Osceola Middle School, North Marion High School cafeteria update, and school planning update, five-year work plan draft.
Chair Cummings, I believe the first workshop is at 2 o'clock and not 9 o'clock because of graduation?
That is correct. 2 p.m.
No, Mr. Christian.
Conflicted, and I will not be in attendance.
So that's the June 18th one?
Yes.
Actually, at 2 o'clock.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. McCall, for that. You're right, that is a graduation day, and Ms. King will not be attending that one.
Yeah, but conflict, um, the central.
All righty. Ms. Martinez Lopez, any comments?
No, sir.
Chair Amy, any comments?
No comments, thank you.
Dr. Mayor.
Thank you. Good evening. Rainy evening, reminds me of England. Yes, yes, I lived in England for a few years, Jack was born there, so every time it rains like this, I think back to the days I'd get the pram, he had like a real, I had to get the real pram, right, and put the cover over it, and we went to market, and so it's happiness. But our thoughts, and prayers, are with the folks who sustained damage during the storm. Officer Carrera, thanks for being here tonight. It's good to see you. Everything going well with you? Yeah, you're awesome. We appreciate you, thank you. So, just, just what, just a few days since we saw each other last Thursday, right? And such change has happened since then. And was it, yeah, it was Friday morning, and my heart was so heavy, thinking of just everything that everybody is going through. And the person who popped into my head was Dr. Coggins. And just to catch our viewers up, Dr. Patrick Coggins was one of the most awesome people I have ever met, brilliant man, and he's the one guiding us through our mission, I'll say, to earn exemplary status with teaching African-American history for our district, and that will, that will be one of the accomplishments that I am so proud of. So, I called Dr. Coggins, and if he's listening to this, I'm going to do a wink, because he actually picked up the phone, and those of you who know Dr. Coggins, yes, you're laughing, yes, that's rare. So we picked up the phone, and we had a great conversation because I said to him that what we're, what we're going through, and what, not only us here, but nationwide, this, solving this issue at the school level, and I'm looking at each of you, it's going to take more than doing a warm, fuzzy book study of To Kill a Mockingbird.
Right.
And to solve this, or even to start the steps to solving these issues that we're all facing, there's going to have to be very, very candid and very direct discussions being had. And I just say to the five of you, I'm depending on you to have them. And as we look at, it's even more than, than just having discussions, but it's really looking at our pedagogy and how, how we are teaching our young, our young children. And I go back to, you know, when I was in college, you know, and you had the, maybe two classes of teaching diverse children, you know, and ooh, you know, then you were supposed to be an expert. It's so much more than that. And I think our colleges and universities are going to start playing catch-up to us, to this issue. It's going to take a while. As we look at not only what we're teaching, but how we're teaching it, I ask you to, to continue to reflect on the changes that were made the past two years in what we're teaching. And there is a incredible woman, Zaretta Hammond, and she is, is a leader in teaching children of color. And there's so much more to it than just putting books in the library that have children with, with different colored skin, and, you know, celebrating Black History Month. And much more to go into than we have time right now. But I do, I just, I say to you that, just don't shy away from, from those conversations, and, and don't allow the, the way we teach children to go back, backwards, to sticking kids who are struggling, you know, sticking ditto's and worksheets in front of them. It doesn't work. It, it doesn't work for, for any child, and we've got the research to prove that it doesn't work for children who are, are coming from struggling backgrounds, or, or children of Please continue to work with, with our awesome professional development team, as I can't wait for them to present to you at the next workshop on how they've renewed the autism endorsement. The potential, the potential is here, and so I, I'm so, I am so confident in where we're going, and so much is to be said to the five of you for the support in getting us here. Thank you for that, and thank you for not going backwards. There's a gentleman called Henry Melville, and I want to clarify that it's Henry and not Herman. Henry Melville was a, an Anglican preacher a couple hundred years ago, but he had a quote that's so profound, and resonates today. He said that "We cannot live for ourselves alone. Our lives are connected by a thousand invisible threads, and along these sympathetic fibers, our actions run as causes and return to us as results." So, I'd like you to keep that, that message in your heart, keep Dr. Coggins on speed dial, because I truly think that we, we are ahead of the game in helping to start solving this problem, and thank you for continuing that mission. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mayor. It is a difficult situation that, that we face for our children to teach true acceptance and true love, and if you're a person of faith, you know that all of us were created equal. And I promise you, Dr. Mayor, I will be a part of helping to make sure our children are taught acceptance and love of all. So, thank you for that. And I just pray for all that whose lives have been disrupted so poorly by all of this. The family of Mr. Floyd, those businesses that were looted and ruined, that doesn't solve anything. We need to sit down to the table, and we truly need to join hands across the table and come up with solutions for this. So, again, you have my promise, Dr. Mayor. Thank you. That's all.
Ms. Stacy?
Yes. One thing, excuse me. One thing that I'd like to thank Dr. Mayor for bringing here. Goodness, I just took a drink and swallowed it real quick. Could you ask someone else real quick?
Come back to you.
Yeah. It is a difficult discussion and topic to have, and Ms. McCall, you touched on faith a little bit, and this morning, I was reading the Bible, and actually, I've read something else, but I was reading the Bible, and the verse that jumped out at me was Romans 8:28, and it reminded me that all, you know, things come for together, for good, you know, they come together.
Work together.
Yes, for good.
For good.
For good. And it's just an extremely difficult time, and I think it's also an awkward and weird time because some people may not know what to say, or, you know, to, to make things, right, because I think it's human nature for us to want to make things better when you see it, but sometimes it's just hard, you know, trying to gather all that. So, I will, Dr. Mayor, also, you know, thank you for bringing Dr. Coggins, you know, before us, and so that we are headed in the right direction. And we, I, we have a long way to go still, and, but it's a start, and we have begun that, so thank you for starting that. And I also would like to acknowledge that it is the end of this school year. It's been a difficult, difficult year for various reasons, and I would like to thank all of our employees, every single one of you, and our students for being resilient, being respectful, being responsible, no matter what was thrown at you. And as a board member, I just thank you, and I encourage you this summer to exercise, read, travel, if you can, just do whatever is going to just give you that break, and so that you can come back this fall and regroup, and we'll be better for this, so, and that's what I had this evening.
Thank you. Ms. Stacy?
Okay. One thing I'd like to thank Dr. Mayor for doing is the Core Knowledge Program. There's actually an original form of Core Knowledge that I liked a little better, but I know there was a lot of talk about, you know, looking at programs that were not DOE programs and DOE reading English curriculum and, and things like that. But I've looked at the, and studied deeply for a number of years, the, the curriculum that's good for all children, but particularly minority children, and children that are a little bit at risk and a little underprivileged, that don't maybe, they're not read to as much as some children are read to. And I began studying Marie Montessori. She was actually a psychiatrist that developed, she was in the institutions with children who could not read, they couldn't become educated, there was, that reading was, they just could not thrive at all, and they lived in institutions. And she went into the institutions, and she actually taught them how to read using phonics. And she was in Italy at the time, and her program was so successful that Mussolini wanted to make it the country's curriculum, and she fled, actually, to India to get away from Mussolini, so that he would not take her curriculum, because he knew, she knew he would bastardize it, and it wouldn't be exactly what she wanted, so she took her curriculum and she left the country with it. She actually came over to the United States, she made her way to the United States, all about the time Dewey was looking at education in the United, he was one of the premier educators here, and it kind of came a time, are we going to go for phonics, Marie Montessori's way, or are we going to go to Dewey's direction? She actually was the educator of the year. She actually did a, a classroom with glass walls, you couldn't see out, but people could see in, and they could watch these classrooms, and it was amazing that the way she taught her curriculum, the Montessori plan. Well, I really enjoyed reading about her because my, and I get kind of teary-eyed, because I go back to where my roots, in Belkley, Florida, where there's so many underprivileged children, and so I guess that was always where my heart was. So, as I remained at, you know, as an activist in, in education, I began looking at other educators that worked well with, and brought underprivileged children, minority children, struggling children in the inner cities up. And I studied Marva Collins. Marva Collins in Chicago completely turned children's lives around. She could teach a child to read in, in just a matter of a few months. She took children from the public education system in Chicago, and that were completely thrown away and were said to be hopeless, and she educated them, she had them reading, if she got them in September, she had them reading by Christmas. And how did she do it? Phonics. So Heidi and I talked about that a lot over time, the phonics way to teach a child to read, and so she began looking at the reading curriculum in the district, and it was very, very missing in phonics, just almost wasn't there, but yet, the teachers thought they were teaching it, and like Marva Collins said, when she would look at the education system in Chicago, they thought they were teaching phonics, but they really didn't even know how to teach phonics, because they had been so far removed from it for so long, because the Dewey way had come in. The Dewey way had kind of taken over with a lot of sight words and this sort of thing. And, and so, when she decided to, to look outside the norm for textbooks, and she, and we looked at the Core Knowledge Program with the phonics program, that is what the Hillsdale Schools use. Hillsdale's are probably our oldest university in the United States, and they have charter schools, and they, and these charter schools are, I don't know, six or seven, I'm around the state, they're going to the top in the district where they're at, they go to the top in reading scores in the state, and they do use a Core Knowledge Program and the phonics program. So, I hope that, you know, in time, that's something that Dr. Mayor brought here, that probably is the best thing that could happen to minority children and children that kind of get a little late start on reading and stuff, because maybe their parents are working hard, and there's different reasons, and, and they don't get exposed to it. But that, Dr. Mayor, thank you for bringing that here, because I believe it will be a foundation. I believe that, I've spoken to your curriculum people, I know that that is what would have started to make a difference in, in our test scores, and I look forward to those first graders that's doing that now, as they move up and they're testing in a couple of years after being on that. But something that Martin Luther King said was, "We all need to live like brothers, or we're going to die together like fools." And so, it looks like, kind of like, we're trying to die like fools, because we can't live together as brothers. And Booker T. Washington, my favorite thing that he said to, to the slaves as they were being freed, "If you don't embrace education, one day they will call us dumb and stupid." Our schools have absolutely been, and y'all know me, I think it's a big plan. I believe when, when Khrushchev stood there in 1959 and said, "Hill, communism will take over this country, there'll never be a shot fired," I think it was to our public education system. I think it was to purposely, purposely not educate a certain segment of the population for a, you can't take over a movement, if you, if everyone's educated, you can't take over, you can't take them over, they can take over uneducated people. And, and I, I just hope and pray that what's happening right now will, everyone will understand. All you got to do is look in Baltimore and look in these cities where these things keep happening over in Chicago, where they keep happening over and over, where they don't talk about the 24 black Americans that died yesterday, they talk about just one person that died, but what about those 24? Do those lives not matter? What about the man that, that passed away? And he had a tremendous, tremendous history, he worked with children. David Dorn, he had an explorers program for kids, which helped children understand about police work. A black fabulous citizen, he died in the riots. Chris Beatty, Patrick Underwood, and Max Brewer, but they aren't getting the attention because they wore blue. And so, we've got to get beyond this. There are agitators in this country that we have got to open our eyes and see, but if our children are educated, that's one thing we can do, and we can start by making sure that, that all children receive the right education. I remember when Angie Boynton told me a long, long time ago that she... I remember when Angie Boynton told me a long, long time ago that she, when she went to Forest High, when she went to Eighth Street and then she went over to Howard Middle for her middle school and she said the textbooks were old and they weren't even updated because they got kind of the hand-me-downs that, you know, that was a cycle, that, that was something that was happening in, in the, in the United States where those schools were given the older stuff that wasn't updated. Angie said, "I learned all this stuff at Eighth Street and here I'm at Howard and it's just now being introduced to me as, oh, it's new because the children over on the west side of town hadn't been taught what she learned at Eighth Street." So this is a long, long, long process and I hope that after I retire, you know, maybe I can come back and work with parents, the, some of the minority parents and get some parenting things going in our schools because we've got to draw our parents into our schools and, and get them to embrace what's happening here. But, but I, I do, I do thank you, Dr. Mayor, for bringing phonics. That's probably the best thing that's happened in this district because it was not here. We've had less than 50 percentile average for, for years, since I've been following it. And, and the school districts that are, that have highly embraced phonics are way ahead. So thank you for doing that because you had to step out of the box to do it. And that's one thing that I think will be your legacy here, is that. Now, one other thing I want to talk about is our graduation. I have spoken, I am getting, I'm hearing about our children, you know, we've, we've lost some children to suicide. We've lost, you know, we've, we've just had some issues and had some things. And I wish we could, when we're asking children to choose between their parents, their dad and their stepfather raised them, their mom and their stepmother raised them, and some of these families are, are very good family units. We're asking these children to choose which parents they want to come to graduation. I think that could be long lasting and I think that is a huge problem. And, and I don't know what the consequence will be down the road in those families' lives that this one was chosen or that one was chosen to come. I've looked, I mean, if we had the graduations in Walmart, we could have everybody. Everybody could go to Walmart and have a graduation because there's no, there's no social distancing going on. There's nothing. I think we've kind of gotten caught up in some of the stuff. I mean, we've seen, I've been following where they've had the riots. There's not been an uptick in COVID. There's not been really an uptick in Daytona after everything that happened two weeks ago in Daytona. There's not been an uptick in, kind of like what happened with the Hong Kong flu when they had, when they all got together for their little summer party and there was no uptick in, in Hong Kong flu either. So I really would like for us to talk a little bit more about this because I have spoken to, I've, I've talked to the fellows to find out about the capacity at our stadiums. We have seating at Westport and Forest for 3,500 and actually at Booster for 5,500. And when you're looking at the number of students, if you've got 600 seniors graduating at Forest, I know Westport's a bigger, a bigger area, but 600 at Forest, you know, we would still have, even if some of the people stood and didn't go into the bleachers and they stood, because they, I, Jody said there's even another space for like, I don't remember if he said 500 or 1,000. Anyway, the fire marshal gets it on up to over 4,000 at Booster and places, you know, that it's safe. Some standing room or something, even if they don't go into the bleachers for some of the overflow of family members. But I'm getting emails, I'm getting calls, kids are calling me. This, the, the times where 50% basically of our, our homes are, you know, four parent families or, or one parent families, but some of the large, some of them that do have the stepparents that, they're very, very close to them when they, because they live at one house for two weeks and they live at another house for two weeks and they grow up like that. And I'm just really having a problem. It kind of reminds me of kind of the way you split families up, sort of like, you know, good old Nazis, you know, tattle on your parents, split your parents up, get in between your family. I just don't like it. And I want, I would, I wish y'all would consider giving two more tickets. So because we're not having an uptick of COVID, we have very little of it in our county. And if we're doing something just because it's a process, it's not good for kids and it's not good for families. And there is space in the end zones for some of the people to stand if they want to come in and stand, even if they only put the two parents in the stands and have some standing or whatever. But there is enough seating. There's 3,500 seats at those two stadiums and 5,500 at Booster and standing room also. And if, if you have a, a high school with 600 graduates, that would be 2,400 tickets and some could stand and you have 3,500 seating. I mean, you know, it's a little, it's not, it's a little more than half, but we're up to restaurants to half capacity and probably it's fixing to grow some more very soon besides half capacity. So I don't know, I don't know how y'all feel about it, but that's the way I feel about it. I just don't want to watch a child and have, and wonder which child next is going to have some kind of emotional problem and take their life. I think, given the fact that not a single child under 25 years old has died from COVID in the state of Florida, not a single one. But they have died from the flu, but not from COVID, but from the flu, which is more dangerous for, for children, for small children. And I don't know, that's just my heart and that's the way I feel about these kids. And I'm just tired of hearing about children crying that because they can't bring both sets of parents that, that raise them to this celebration.
Thank you, Ms. Tracy. Ms. Thoreau.
When it comes right down to it, from, from my perspective, the mission has never changed. You know, we, we have these ideals that we all are supposed to live by and that a lot of us try hard every day to live by. And it does seem like at different moments in time that that's where the rage and frustration comes from because it's like, if this is the way it's supposed to be and people talk about it, they worship over it, a lot of folks try to practice it, then, you know, why is it still like this? You know, what are we missing? And I feel like at these times when the rage and frustration reaches a, a breaking point, that, that's a sign, for me anyway, of, of better things to come. And the reason why I say that is because it's making people focus. It's making people focus on the things that are fundamental to the survival of our society, to the survival of the United States certainly and by extension, the world. So this is a really difficult and upending time. But to me, it's a signal of, of brighter days ahead. And it's always been about listening and connecting. Listening and connecting. And when people become focused on doing that, that's when you begin to see another change for the better. Because it kind of strips away all the rest of the stuff and, and gets us back to what really matters about being human. And I look forward to graduation because we, in the context of everything and listening and connecting with as many people as possible, knowing that no matter what decision we make, we're not going to get 100% approval. That's why we make the big bucks. But when so many folks wanted a traditional graduation, as traditional as possible, all wanted to be together with their class, not have things split up, our folks went, what it took in terms of the details to figure all this out, to make the graduation as traditional as possible and also as safe as possible, is the behind the scenes work on that has been incredibly, incredibly responsible and responsive. And I've gotten emails and, and telephone calls too. I'll say that I've gotten a few, not an overwhelming majority. And it, the kids look to their adult role models. And if children are born, you know, with, with no prejudice and, and no hate, then where is all this coming from? I think we have our answer. And I'm blending two things here because as long as we continue to butt heads, then that, all of our energy is going to be directed to continuing to butt heads. And then at some point, the heads are going to get sore and we'll start talking again. And in the meantime, I remain committed to providing as typical of a graduation as possible in these times, being as safe as possible and, and really asking the folks that are struggling with this so hard to keep in mind that they have a safe and healthy child, stepchild, biological child, non-blood child, grandchild, whoever it is that has raised these kids and, and been their champions, you're still a participant and always will be. This is a blip in time and I'm not minimizing the importance of graduation. However, looking at it in totality, instead of butting heads, use this as a time to make things even more meaningful with the people that you love. And I'll just leave that right there. I do want to move on to a much happier and, and also very celebration worthy opportunity that I had this week to go back to where I started, which was at North Marion High School to celebrate some retirements, one of whom is Linda Freeman. 52 years as the school secretary at North Marion High School. Think of what she has witnessed and, and worked through all of, all of these years.
Same school?
The same school. She graduated from North Marion High and never left. Right, you just don't see that anymore. And so it was wonderful to go back and, and spend some time. There was also someone else that was retiring that I worked with when I was there. And it just reminded me all over again of, of what's most important in life. You know, we're not going to agree on everything, but in the end, it's about listening, connecting and maintaining relationships through, through the years because that's what it's all about. So it was wonderful and, and the principal up there, Ms. Livinggood, and, and her folks did a beautiful job. Each retiree got a rocking chair with a plaque on the back with a number of years. And it was just, it was so nice, it was, it was so meaningful. And it's, we really are, that exemplified to me the meaning of, of school, family. And, and I felt that, that day and it, and it was great to be back. So my prayer for, for everyone is that they will focus on building those kinds of relationships where you can go back and, and celebrate and, and be satisfied and, and happy with the hard work that you put in and the relationships that you made. So yes, it's, school has officially ended, sort of. A lot of new things will be starting. We're trying to get kids back in school as quickly as possible. There is a lot to look forward to, but in the meantime, take your breaths, enjoy yourself. It is summer and hopefully we will continue to just celebrate what's good and, and keep working through what still needs to be changed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thoreau, and to all of you for your comments on tonight. Where do I want to start? Let me deal with the graduation. We've all been inundated with a bunch of emails and correspondence concerning graduation. And we made our decision based on the recommendation that we got from the CDC, based on staff that's come up with the plan, based on principals, based on a lot of different people and coming up with a good viable plan to make sure that these kids had some semblance of a graduation. I don't know if anything has changed, but Dr. Mayor, has something changed where we need to change? Or, I mean, I, because I'm hearing people thinking that something has changed. I haven't heard that something's changed.
Well, I think the governor moving to Phase Two opened things up a little bit more. Lots of reports now, even this afternoon, I saw one where, and I'm not a fan of them, but the World Health Organization is saying now that they said three feet spacing, not six. There's so much varied information, but I think what tipped the phone calls, because we were getting them too at the off. I was sitting here trying to do, and y'all know math isn't my thing, but I'm sitting here doing the numbers. If, I'd like the opportunity to, and I texted Mr. McEntire and he must be on family time and that's a good thing, but just to chat with him tomorrow, just to see his thoughts. I think that, I know that when he talked to me, they said that they spaced nine feet between seats at, in the stadiums. So we do have some time. I, I would like to talk to him, to see what he thinks and, and to, to email you all.
Yeah, because I spoke with Mr. McEntire at length on Thursday and he was pretty emphatic about the plan. And Phase Two, let's keep that in perspective here. It's what opens 250 people, groups of 250. You know, restaurants at half capacity are very different than stadiums with thousands of people. And in speaking with our own health person here in Marion County, we're now seeing an uptick in, in Marion County. And it's just after Memorial Day when everybody went out.
That's where I'm at. I did talk to Mark Lander on yesterday morning and, and we can act like it's not happening, but it is happening. Florida is on an uptick currently of 22 states that reopened early. Florida is on an uptick. And, and I asked Mr. Lander what did he attribute this uptick to? And his clear response to me was, "We're getting the uptick because of the Memorial Day weekend where people did not social distance, where people were in groups." And I'm, I'm just telling you guys, we can do whatever we got, the board wants to do. But me personally, and I'll stand, I'm standing on it, I'm about safety. I'm about making sure these kids be able to go to college, be able to go to the military, be able to go get a job, whatever. I'm, I'm not just looking at one day. That one day is important, it's a rite of passage, I get it. But their life is much more vital than just one ceremony where they could be exposed to something where they may not see the next day. So I'm, I'm, I'm just going to record as it, that's where I'm at. If there was not an uptick right now, hey, I might think differently, but there is an uptick in the number of cases. And I just keep thinking every time we put people together, and, and Dr. Mayor just said it so eloquently, she don't know what she said to me when she said what she said. There's too many unknowns, there's too many unknowns. If one, one agency is saying six feet, another agency is saying three feet, what is it? Is it one feet? What is it? We, one foot, what is it? Is it one feet? What is it? One foot? What is it? We don't know.
I'll tell you what it is. It's not going to end until the majority of us have it and we have herd immunity. That's the only thing that's going to end it, or it's going to go on.
And I don't want to be, I don't want to be the one responsible for putting our kids in danger. I have gotten the emails. I listened to the emails. I've responded to the emails. And I think that the decision that we made was based on sound work that the district, our district people, that we charged them to come up with something. I think we made a great decision based on the information that they gave us. I'm just not comfortable. I heard you, Ms. Stacy. I heard everything that you said. I just don't want to put any kids in danger of getting it. And I'll err on the side of safety always. I'll go on the side of safety always. So.
They've done a very good job scaring everyone.
Homeover, Ms. Stacy. Let me finish. Let me finish. Because this is my time now. You just had 15 minutes. Let me deal with this. I don't want to ever be guilty of putting a child in a spot where, and I would not do this myself, put a child in a spot where they had to make a decision between parents or anything like that. I said it last Thursday, parents help these kids, help these kids make these tough decisions. This is a tough decision for them. You want to choose mom or stepmom, dad or stepdad, it's a tough decision. But parents, you can help alleviate some of that stress from these kids. And I don't want to seem insensitive. As I said, I, my daughter, we couldn't go to the graduation. We had to watch it virtually. And she couldn't go there. She's just a pitcher. So I get it. I truly understand it. But we have to, we have to keep people safe. That's the biggest thing. So that's where I'm at with the graduation. Now, the other thing where I'm at, yesterday at Brewster, we, Dr. Mayer and I were there. The Fall 2020 School Reopening Task Force met yesterday. It was well-attended, and they did do the social distancing. So we're still social distancing in certain things. I would say that we need to continue in certain things. And Dr. Gullett was on telephonically, and we had the beginnings of planning for what Fall 2020 is going to look like, whether it be August or September, whatever it is, we're planning for. There are some folk that are out there planning, parents that are listening. There's a survey out there that we need you to participate in. I think from Friday to yesterday morning, there had been 10,000 responses, 10,000 people had responded from Friday till yesterday morning, about 10 o'clock. We need folk to answer that, go on the survey, and deal with the survey is vitally important. We are, again, we're still dealing with unknowns on what we can do and what the fall will look like. It's it's going to be an undying task, but I'm sure that the people that are going to be on this task force, who are on the task force, are going to come up with some great suggestions, and they're going to, they plan to bring it back to the board. I'm thankful for Dr. Mayer and Dr. Gullett already working together to get this thing formulated so that we won't be behind the eight ball come August. It's going to be a a good plan.
Can I touch on something while I'm thinking about it? I heard you say August or September, and one thing I hope that the task force considers is our employees and their pay, because they weren't preparing that if they don't get an income for a month. So I just want to throw that out there to take that back, because that goes with purposely.
I think what's going to happen is the task force is going to contact each and every one of you to be on a subcommittee because they need the board's input. And there's, I think, several subsets that we need. We need all of our, we're diverse. Just face it, all of us sitting on this board are very diverse, and our diversity is our strength. And that's what's going to help us make a good decision for fall. So all of us bring something different to the table. So just be expecting them to contact you. And please, please, please participate. So yeah, you're right. And you're so right, because we got, we're, one of the things, and y'all know that we always say this, when we're talking about things, we talk about how much it's going to cost. And Teresa is there. Teresa is there. So Ms. Boston Ellis is there. Because we want to know how much certain things are going to cost, because we're going to have some new challenges, and we may not have the funding for it. We don't know if the government or the state is going to give us anything additional, but we're going to have some new mandates, and we're going to have to do some things differently. So, but that's what the task force is going to talk about, and you guys are going to, all of us are going to help make that decision.
Did I read that Volusia County just announced they're opening like their August date?
Yes, I was going to talk about that Thursday, right, at work session.
They're opening full bore, aren't they?
Well, they're planning to open. They're planning to open full bore August. We don't, again, we don't know. We still haven't gotten direction. Am I right, Dr. Mayer? We still haven't gotten any directions from anybody. So the plan is, and we're still planning for August 10th. I think that's the date for Marion County. So we're still planning for August 10th, but there could be something that come down in two weeks, saying, no, not August 10th, after Labor Day. One of the questions in the, in the survey is, would you, in the parents' survey, would you feel comfortable sending your child back to school on day one? Would you feel comfortable sending your child back to school after Labor Day? Would you feel comfortable sending your child back to school in January? Or are you not planning to send your kid back to school? I could tell you, as of yesterday morning, there were 1,000 parents said they weren't planning to send their kids back.
They learned how to do virtual learning. They like it.
No, it wasn't that they learned how to do virtual. They didn't feel comfortable.
They're worried.
They're worried. They're worried.
Too. Sorry. Each district is going to have a different plan. And I think my sense is the state is waiting to see how each district comes up with their own plan, because certainly how we choose to do it here would not be how Miami Dade would choose, you know, with the difference there. I know Duval has a completely different plan as well. So I think.
And each county has been charged with your own plan.
Correct.
Yes.
And my sense is that's what's going to happen. Yes. You know, and again, as I said in the greeting yesterday, we're stepping up and taking care of our own. And I think we've, I'm so, just so proud of how we have done that, and so that continues. And I think it's, we just continue to make those bold statements and we do the next right thing for kids, and that's what we do.
And in thinking about the preliminary results from that survey, if 10% of the 10,000 said that they're not going to send their kids back at all, go ahead and multiply that times five, because it's about 50,000 students. I'm rounding up. Right, Kevin? Rounding up. That's 5,000 students.
You have to round way out.
Okay, I'm sorry, 40. Whatever it is. Y'all do the math. You're talking about over 4,000 kids that possibly would not be coming back to school at all. That's a lot of kids. Are we prepared to deal with that?
I do know people that really enjoy the online learning, and they're hooking in, their parents are going to be working at home more now. They're hooking into Florida Virtual. They're excited.
Leon County's plan says that, that they're going to provide both a hybrid model for parents. So again, us responding to our kids.
We have a lot of unknowns. So this task force, that's why we need you guys on the task force. So we can deal with these types of things, and go ahead and ask you guys for the preliminary results from Mr. Whitehouse or Mr. McAtire, whoever it is, so you can kind of follow these daily trends with this survey. So, and then I want to thank Dr. Mayer. I'm promising, I want to close. I want to thank Dr. Mayer for bringing up the elephant in the room, the tough subject of the racial climate that we're currently in. It is, it is, and I'm very deliberate in the things that I say. This is a tough time for the world. This is globally. This is not just United States. This is not just Ocala. This is not just Florida. This is global. When you see other countries protesting and speaking out against certain things, the cat came, kind of came out the bag when we were able to view it on TV. That makes a difference. That makes people see things in a different light. That makes people understand what some of us have been saying for years. Me personally, and I tried, you guys will never know the pain that I have, because I have three sons and a grandson, and I struggle all the time with their parents. I struggle with their going out or hanging out. I struggle with my, Nancy, you know my son, EJ. I struggle with him, because yet he's 20, 24 years old, but he doesn't have the mind of a 24-year-old. And he not being as communicative as other adults, being in a store and someone mistake him, thinking that he's doing something wrong, and because he can't communicate, he get put in a situation where he can't breathe. I struggle with that daily, daily, daily. Coming through that, growing up through that, I understand. I will never understand the violence on any side, either side of the situation. But I understand the frustration. I deal with it, as I say, daily. And I have conversations with my sons and my grandson all the time, because they can't respond to certain situations like everybody else can. So Marion County, when I looked and I heard the speaker tonight, I heard her concerns. I heard her frustration. I felt it personally. I felt her frustrations. I marched last week. I felt their frustrations. And I completely understand. I completely understand every aspect of it. I, I did get the stuff that she was talking about, and we are looking into it. Marion County, let me say this. Marion County is a diverse school district, is a diverse county. And I don't believe that any of us would tolerate people doing things that are racist, working for this district. That's just not, that's not us. That's not what we want to portray. That's not anything that we will exemplify out. And I talked to Dr. Mayer yesterday morning immediately, first thing yesterday morning, about this issue. And I also went over a little bit more, and I'm glad she talked to Dr. Coggins. I couldn't get him. You were good. You got him. But to some others, Mr. McAtire and Mr. Ayers and others around the district that have been around for a while, and wanting to know, hey, what does our, what does Marion County School District's diversity look like? What does our, what does our diversity training look like? What does our sensitivity training look like? Is it, is it just our reading sign, or is it real training? And I think, I think that as a board, we may need to look at and getting with Dr. Mayer, Dr. Gullett, Dr. Mayer before she leaving, Dr. Gullett, as she's coming in, getting in and implementing some real sensitivity and diversity and cultural awareness training for our district. It's needed, and this is the moment that we should be pushing it. This is the time that we should be expecting it from every employee in the district. There should not be, every employee of this, of this district, I don't care if you're, if you are cutting grass, I don't care if you are doctor whatever, we all have a level of ethics that we are to maintain in our positions, whatever it is, because we work for the Marion County School District. And when you work for the Marion County School District, you're saying that you're dealing with kid. Every kid counts, regardless of their color, regardless of them, where they come from, if they're affluent or if they're poor. It does not make a difference. So we have to, as a board, make a difference with the people that we're dealing with on it. And no, no, no parent, no child, no person should be ridiculed or have to know that the person that's standing in front of them has ill feelings towards their race. Unacceptable, completely unacceptable, completely unacceptable, unacceptable. And there are some things that we have to do as a district. I'll be getting with Dr. Gullett and Dr. Mayer before she go to brainstorm some things. One of the problems, Ms. Stacy, you bring back your upbringing. One of the reasons I feel like I'm, I am where I am today is because I was blessed enough to have people in front of me that look like me, that came out of the community that I came from, that were able to impart something in me. Didn't have them all the time, but I had some. I had some. And I think that's an issue when you don't have folk in front of you, because they may not be as sensitive to the situation that other people come from. So we, we need to do something, and I think a lot of things that people are doing around the district, or I won't say district, in the world, things that people say on social media is just, it's, I'm not going to say it. Martin Luther King talks about sincere ignorance and conscientious stupidity. It's not ignorance, not anymore. It's conscientious stupidity. They're intentionally doing what they're doing, and it's to poke at people and to do things that will enrage folk. You're right. There's agitators. There's all type of people. And sometimes we need to just call folk out on what they are. If they're racist, they're racist. If they bad, they bad. We just need to call it out. And when you start dealing with it and moving on, because most of us want something different. Most of us want to live in a different land. And I'm 51 years old, and I'm just tired of dealing with it. I'm tired of dealing with it.
If I was writing a curriculum?
Ms. Stacy, let me, Ms. Stacy, Ms. Stacy, I got the last comment. I got the last comment. Because I gave you ample time to say everything that you want to say, and we did not interrupt. The last comment tonight is, enough is enough, guys. Enough is enough. We cannot continue to do and the same thing over and over again and expect a different outcome. It's crazy. It's insane. And we have to start teaching these kids, like you said, Ms. Thor, no kid comes here knowing the difference between black and white. No kid. That's taught. That's trained. That's because of the situation that they're in on a daily basis. So as a school district, Dr. Mayer, I will take that charge. I will take that challenge. And I think the rest of these board members, Ms. King, Ms. Stacy, Ms. Thor, and Ms. McCall, we will take that. We will take the baton, and we will continue to run with it, because we're going to make a difference. Before I leave the board, there will be some changes. There has to be some changes. And racial equity has to be one of them across the whole district. So that's the final word for tonight from us, from me, from me. Ms. Stacy, you have anything else now?
The only thing I would say is, we went wrong a long time ago talking about different races. There's one race, and it's the human race. And that's what we are. When a brain surgeon looks into our brain, or we do a blood transfusion, nobody knows what color it came from. We're all the human race. And that's what we'll be judged by when we stand at the pearly gates, what we did as humans, not what we did by color. And so I do believe there's a large business that has been made off of race. And if everybody would just start talking about the human race and forget skin colors, there's not, there's nobody in this room that's the same color. Nobody. I'm probably the whitest one of all. But you know what? We're all from the human race. God didn't talk in the Bible about races. Talked about lands, but we're all one race. And I get sick and tired of hearing about races, because there's only one. There's the human race.
Final thought, final thought. This is from our, our statement. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, diverse. That's the one. Diverse and dynamic. Enough is enough. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Come on.
Moved by Ms. Thor, second by Ms. Call. Meeting is adjourned at 6:50 a.m.